Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Code Enforcement and Nuisance Board of the City of Bowling Green, on the date being November 16th, 2015. And the time is a few minutes after 5:00 PM. We are here in City Hall, Commissioned Chambers, and I think we need to have the roll called, please.
Here. Simpson.
Here.
Dear Bone. Wilder.
Here.
Thomas.
Yes. Let's swear in the staff while we're... Before I forget it, you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. Thank you. Okay, you've been mailed the minutes from the last meeting, which was dated October 27, 2015. Do you have any changes? Additions?
Recommended to be approved.
Second.
Before we do that, I think on the last page, if you will look, it says the Code Enforcement Nuisance Board meeting can be on Tuesday, November 16th, it should be Monday.
I'll correct.
Okay.
You said them being on Tuesday.
Second.
Yes. Simpson, Wilder. Simpson.
Yes.
Wilder.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes. And we have an announcement. Evidently, we have a distinguished award here of the American Association of Code Enforcement Officer of the Year to Mr. Tim Butts. Do you... Would you like to say anything?
Congratulations. Proud of you.
December meeting, discussion of that. Do we wish to have a meeting? I think we, in the past, we have not had a meeting. Is there any discussion, board members?
Unless there's a special need, I don't think we need to.
If not needed, I wouldn't suggest we have one.
Do I have a motion?
A move that we not meet in December.
Second to that motion.
Wilder and Simpson. Simpson.
Yes.
Wilder.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes. All right, we have a vote, and we have to have a chair and a vice chair for the 2016 year.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that Jack Thomas be our chair for this coming year.
Do you have a second on that, or do you need a second?
Second.
Second.
And Wilder. Simpson.
Yes.
Wilder.
Yes.
Thomas.
And I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Simpson continue as vice chair for one more year.
Second.
Wilder and Thomas. Simpson.
Yes.
Wilder.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
And I'd like to commend Dr. Thomas for his excellent work as chair during the past year. It's been with the help of this staff, wonderful staff. It's been the... I've been on the board a while now, and it's been the easiest year I can remember. In fact, it's been almost like a party from back to town.
I endorse that.
And then Delain has stepped in on occasion and done a wonderful job, so we're very blessed to have outstanding leadership and a good, strong board. I think maybe the strongest board we've had in my several years while serving in this capacity, and we're all privileged to do this. And so, Jack, congratulations, and commend you for nice leadership, good leadership during the past year.
Okay, let's get to the hearing agenda and appeals, code enforcement. We have nothing on that. Old business, case number 2015-3150, citation 2015-2170-757. Old Morgantown Road, owner YBNR Investments LLC, respondent Mr. Don Minton, officer Brad Shar-Grodowski. Is that close enough? Share Garage.
Shar-Grodowski.
Shar-Grodowski, all right. I want to ask you to do my name, which was Travisano. Brad, would you explain what you have here today?
As of last meeting, the board had ordered that Mr. Minton appear at the next scheduled meeting, which is today, to present a plan of action to get this property into compliance. In addition, the board wanted to see significant progress towards compliance at this time to avoid a per day fine being imposed. As of today's date, the same number of vehicles that were on the property appear to still be on the property. The vehicles are still parked on the grass, they are still inoperable. There are two vehicles that were previously on the premises of 757 Old Morgantown Road that have been moved across the street to 1601 Sharon Drive. Making that property now have two inoperable vehicles, one with a flat tire, as you see here on the monitor, and the other one with no registration, which then presents a problem for that property as well, having inoperable vehicles. In addition to it appearing that the same amount of inoperable vehicles are on this premises, it appears that there were at least two, possibly three, new vehicles added since the last meeting that were not previously there, so I don't know if those were recently purchased or moved to the property, but those are also present. The code violations still stand as they did back in August.
You raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I don't know if he tucked pictures or not, but we moved everything. The two cars that was moved over to property at Sharon, we got a...
Can you speak into the mic there? There, thank you.
The two vehicles that were parked over at Sharon was parked over there because I've had gravel delivered, and they said the vehicles had to be on gravel. I've had to move them. The vehicles that had up front, and we've had a load of gravel delivered, about 25 tons, $445 worth of gravel, and we spread that. That's the reason those two vehicles over there. As far as adding any vehicles, I don't think there... I've added, I don't know which vehicles you're talking about that I've added.
I believe there was a blue van, and then, Tim, if you go back two pictures. One more, please. All right, one more. That red vehicle there, and again, those may have just been the ones that were up front that were removed.
No, they were up front. That red vehicle was up front, the blue one and the van were behind the fence, and as soon as I had the gravel, I had those pulled up there. We've got a rollback. We ordered tires for the rollback, we couldn't operate the rollback, I was afraid that the front tires was awfully bad on it. We ordered new tires, or my son ordered new tires. I think the tires come in, and they weren't the right size, he had to reorder them again. He went today, and... Yeah, my son would like to speak.
All right, please. You swear to tell the truth, hold truth, so help you God. What is your name, please?
Nancy Don Minton.
Okay.
Mr. Knapper knows me, Mr. Butts, I've dealt with Teddy Webb, Mr. Herman. I've always taken care of my dad's property, did the repairs. I think Mr. Knapper can attest, most of the time, he would call me or tell me something that needed to be done, and I would take care of it. I recently, about a year and a half ago, went back to UPS to work, so I haven't been attentive to his property, I haven't helped him. He's depended on me to take care of the properties. And last week, I was notified about the car lot issue, and I spoke with Brad, I met Brad, spoke with him today. Actually, me and another guy went over there to assess the situation, see what we needed to do. He's got a wrecker, I had the rollback down at Bowling Green Muffler, getting some work done to it. Like I said, I just, I came aware of the situation, but I've always taken care of the problems that we've had, or he's had, you know, repairs, violations, whatever. But, you know, I mean, I'm here now, I will take care of this, one way or another. I mean, you know, this, that's what I've always done, but like I said, I went back to work, and I've just been full of time, you know, I haven't had any involvement with the car lot.
Are you still working for...
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I work third shift.
On these vehicles now, I've contacted Parrish, contacted Causes. I contacted a place in Litchfield, the guy in Litchfield said that he was interested in purchasing all the vehicles. Talked to him on the phone two or three times, he was supposed to be down, and I have yet to send. I don't know what the problem is, but we've got these 50-something vehicles that's there. Of course, I was under impression, like I told you last time, that we had a car lot, and I could have vehicles on the car lot, but I don't have any place to put these vehicles as of right now. Nancy says he knows, can get rid of them and...
I've got a guy that has a junkyard that is willing to take them, and the thing is, I have to get them to him. But I called and left Brad a message of, what, 2:30?
At 2:45.
2:45. I just picked up the rollback.
Where's he located?
Sir?
Where is he located?
Auburn.
So he's going to take them, he's not going to reimburse you anything for them? Is that what you said?
Well, we're gonna do some trading on some things, but I mean, it's nothing, you know, we're getting rid of them. I don't know what his plans are, but I mean, if I'm... It needs to be taken care of, and like I said, I mean, I was just notified of it. I just went over there today and actually ran into Brad, that's the first time I'd met him, and that, you know, today was the first day I'd been over at the lot and looked at everything.
As you sit by the pictures, we had the gravel, finally had it delivered. Glad a part of last where you come in is when you're done.
What type of timeframe are you looking at to get rid of them and have them towed to Auburn?
I would like 30 days, but you tell me, you know, I'm, I plan on, I work midnight to nine. When I get off, I plan on working, you know, four to five hours every day until it's taken care of. I mean, I talked with Brad, and I think Mr. Knapper can attest to it, everything I've ever been asked to do or been written up on, I've taken care of. Mr. Herman would actually call me instead of writing up violations and tell me something needed to be done, and I'd call him back that afternoon or before the end of the week, and I'd have it taken care of.
How many vehicles a day do you think you could move?
With no problems, I would say five to six a day. I mean, you know, granted, no major issues.
Jack, Jack, there are, most of them are immobile, I mean, they're not gonna be able to be started or run, and they'll have to be dragged or picked up and then loaded on a lowboy type thing.
One per truck, or...
No, no, he's talking about a lowboy that hauls two or three or four, or if they're, you know, junk, they can just stack them on top of each other as long as they strap them together.
The rollback, I'll handle two at a time.
But you can't drive them up, you have to literally tow them or pick them up.
Got a winch that pulls them up on them, yes, sir. Well, I was speaking with Brad, and like I said, if, you know, today's Monday, I plan on starting in the morning. If he wanted to meet me Friday at noon or 1:00, and I guarantee you, there will be significant progress.
The individual in Litchfield, Kentucky, are you gonna pursue that again, another telephone call?
I'll try to get out, you know, I've never met that individual, the guy that works for me, which, I suppose he works for me, I mean, he only worked one day last week, helping me out on things, and then he didn't show up today. But he gave me his number, I called, he said he had the junkyard down there, and I told him what I had, and he said he was interested in it, that he would get up there as soon as, you know, possible could, take a look at him and make an offer. Now, he hasn't showed up. I went down to Parrish, like I said, I've talked, I've interviewed the guys, and we do business for a long time. I talked to him last week, and where they talk, you know, he wouldn't be interested in it right now, but you know, junk's down to $50 a ton, you know, a car could be around $100 to $150 at the most, per vehicle, of course. I didn't know what, I didn't know that Nancy was working on something, to be honest with you, I didn't know he was, he was talking to anybody.
Do you concur, agree with what he's suggesting be done?
Yeah, yeah, we need to get rid of them, yeah, I don't mind getting rid of them at all, you know, but I, like I said, when we moved them the last time, I lost about $8,000 or $10,000, and that's what I done this week, I made a sheet up of what vehicles were out there and how much I had in them, and, you know, I just can't afford to take the $100 or $150, because, you know, I got, you know, $500 or $600 a piece per vehicle in them, if not more.
Your fines, if your fines keep going...
I realize that.
Eats it up real fast.
That's the reason I'm wanting to go and get rid of them, but like I said, I gravelled the lot the other day to get, there are several of them behind the fence that we can retail, and it's nothing, I even, you asked me to bring a plan today, and those vehicles, I could probably take down to one of the sales, I could either take them to the Franklin sale or take them to the E-Town sale. You know, it's just getting them down there, however long it takes to get them there and get them going.
The problem with probably is pretty indefinite, taking them someplace.
No, I...
And I'd like to see a solution that you agree to, that we can say, all right, in X days, these will be gone or disposed of, I don't care how you do it.
Whatever Nancy says is fine with me. I mean, you know, like I said, he...
Will you tell me what you want done, and I mean, as long as it's within a reasonable timeframe, that's all I'm asking.
Well, I see what, you're mixing apples and oranges. We might do Auburn, we might do something else. I think the board...
If he wants my help, I'm gonna take care of it, sir. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm not really gonna ask, I'm just gonna solve the problem.
All right. We are not meeting in December, so I think before the end of December, before the end of the year, that gives you plenty of time, would it not?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Minton, is that acceptable to you?
That's acceptable, yes, yes.
All right, so my understanding is that you will have them towed. What is the person's name that's in Auburn?
It'd be Dale Brown, Brown's Automotive.
And he has agreed to take the lot?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the plan as presented to us?
So move.
I want to go stop a moment. How about the vehicles, other vehicles we got over at the other place that we need to get rid of?
What other place, sir?
Over at the trailer park.
I'll take care of the three that are over there, I'll take care of them, sir.
Brad, how many vehicles you got over there at the trailer park?
As of today, there are four.
Three or four, whatever. So whatever vehicles are over there that are inoperable, immobile, or whatever, will be included in the, all the vehicles that's at the, this place.
Yes, sir.
Is that acceptable?
Just, just so we get your motion, last time, you had indicated that if there were not substantial improvements, that there would be add a $300 per day fine, so I think you need to, we need to address that in our motion.
Right, broadly.
Well, could we just say if it's not done by the end of the year, then it's $300 a day from now?
Right.
All right, you want to amend your...
I just call that your attention, so, that would be an accept, that's acceptable with the board.
What we'll do is, what we'll do is, we'll, between the two, we'll have them contact Brad and let him know, and Brad will be watching the property as well, but let us know when he's done, last day of done, completion, and that way we'll know exactly when they were completed.
We'll make sure we understand that, right? You know, all of them gonna be gone by what day in December?
Well, let me, let me make this thing, what about the cars that I have for sale that are running vehicles? I mean, I don't have to move those off the lot there.
Just the all inoperable vehicles, correct?
Inoperable, immobile?
Yes, yes.
I mean, that means if they got tire, if they don't have tires, they're immobile?
Well, I'm talking about there's, you know, there's gonna be a half a dozen or a dozen cars that I have for retail.
Okay, okay, let's say if they can comply with the code enforcement policy on immobile, inoperable vehicles, they could stay there?
In vehicles parked on the grass, all the vehicles need to be on an improved parking surface.
Okay, can, I know we had a copy of those details, can we make sure he has another copy of those details, of those policies and procedures and the gravel and all that type stuff? Those can remain?
Certainly. Before we vote, I read in the minutes that that was not zoned as a automobile resale lot or used car lot, is that correct?
It's zoned as neighborhood business.
Can you or can you not put vehicles for sale on that?
We've had a car lot there for 15 years, 17 years, okay.
So he would be grandfathered in that particular case?
I think, I think we discussed it one time, the grandfather aspect came in to being.
He would be grandfathered, so it's still back to the gravel.
Okay.
You know, if it's operable, he's trying to sell it, it had to be on the gravel, improved surface.
Right.
There won't be anything parked behind the fence from now on, it'll all be up front. Like I said, I just had 25 tons of gravel delivered over there.
Lots of gravel, good, lots of gravel.
Yeah.
Brad, do you still have that letter from P and Z?
If you pull up the thumb drive, I believe it's on there, actually.
That actually says what's allowed and what's not allowed.
If you go to...
With the way it's zoned.
That way, we all know what we're working with and we're dealing with, and you've got in black and white, and you're both communicating with one another, and...
We've got a, we get a license from the state of Kentucky every year, you know, we've had one ever since we started a car lot, and like I said, it's been 17 years ago, and we, whatever we had to do, we want the right channels to do it.
We're making progress.
Yes.
Where you been? Working?
Been working, sir, yes, sir.
Okay.
Getting ready to get back, busy time of the year.
Work you overtime?
Yeah, I really don't want overtime, I just kind of wonder if I want it or not.
I'm not sure if we have a copy that's up on the screen, I do have a paper copy of the email, though, that we had addressed, or that you're speaking of from last time, that came from Steve McQuarter at Planning and Zoning. He states that the property is zoned neighborhood business and does not allow vehicle sales. You mentioned that it appears that most of the vehicles on the site are inoperable, giving the appearance of a salvage yard. A salvage yard is also not allowed on a property zoned neighborhood business. Also mentioned that the property owner is looking to gravel the lot and fence in vehicles on the property, all drives and parking areas must be pa, excuse me, must be paved with concrete, asphalt, brick pavers, pervious material, or similar paving material.
Brad, what I was talking about was the last package we had, I think the last, our last meeting, had some, the code and code things in there, that's what I was talking about.
Yes, sir, yeah, we have that, we can put that up on the, on the screen, but what...
But I mean, if we give him a copy of that, that's, that's what we, he wants to be able to follow, and that's it.
That's attached on the notice of violation and the citation, but we can certainly provide him with this as well.
You don't have it there, but...
I don't have it.
When I sent him the findings of facts, it has all of the violations attached to it, including each motion from each board meeting he's been at for this property, so in the motion is what he's, part of what he's gonna have to follow.
I don't think, Mr. Chairman, you're here on a zone violation at this point tonight. Neighborhood business, my understanding, does not allow motor vehicle sales. He says he's grandfathered in, I will tell you, the city of Bowling Green adopted most of its planning and zoning in '73, some of it existed in '69. It's hard, when you go back in time to what was here and what wasn't here. I think that's something he probably needs to address with planning and zoning, you know, at this point, but I don't think it's before you right now, but it could be, you know, the next time around, so I just, everybody needs to get clear on that. I believe you're correct, I think your letter is correct unless you can, it can be established that there was something there before planning and zoning took effect, which has been a long time ago now.
On from that, I just thought, I'd read it, and I thought I'd bring it up. So we have a complicated motion here.
Yes, I was gonna ask if some, if someone could repeat that for me, so I would really know what the motion was, sorry, it's kind of been back and forth.
I'll try.
Okay.
Unless one of you took a shot. That the inoperable vehicles, and I think we all understand what that means, shall be removed between now and the end of December to a place, right now, we'll designate as Brown's Automotive in Auburn, that there are other vehicles that may be operable, and they are to be moved onto gravelled areas and not in the grass. That also includes the four or more vehicles that are in the trailer park are to be moved. And you think you can do that, that's the end of the thing, by the end of December?
Yes.
And if that's not accomplished, then there's a 300, I think it was $300 a day fine.
Correct.
Regardless of the number of vehicles left, inoperable vehicles. Did you get that, Tabitha?
Got it. Okay. And was that who, I missed who made the motion originally?
Wilder.
Wilder, okay. And you seconded that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay. Simpson?
Yes.
Wilder?
Yes.
Thomas? Okay.
Okay, progress.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to case number 2015-3418, citation 2015-2674. The address is 2340 Russellville Road, again, the owner YBNR Investments LLC, and respondent Mr. Don Minton. Brad, you're the officer again, you want to explain, that's the trailer court, right?
Yes, sir, it is the Mobile Home Park. At the last meeting, the board had imposed a $150 per day fine to run until today, and ordered that Mr. Minton appear at this meeting to present a plan of action to get the property into compliance. In addition, the board ordered that Mr. Minton address the sanitation issues on the property as well as the inoperable vehicles. As you will see, with a few pictures here, the picture on the left is from today, the picture on the right is from, I believe, August, when the notice of violation was sent out. There really hasn't been any changes, except there's a door there today that wasn't there a few months ago. All of the sanitation issues, the tire, all of the wood accumulated, construction material and such, is still there. This is the dumpster area, the dumpster since the last meeting has been emptied. Mr. Minton did move the white vehicle, and it appears that the sanitation company did empty the dumpster. However, the furniture is still there, as you see, the couch underneath there on the left-hand side with the couch that's leaning up against it are the same that were there in August, that are still there today, as well as the leather couch. The wood that's in front of the dumpster there has certainly aged over the last few months, but is still there as well. Um, the wood that's in front of the dumpster there has certainly aged over the last few months, but is still there as well. Uh, all those, of course, would be health or sanitation issues as they're collecting water and, and mold and such. Uh, the picture on the left is from the last board meeting, uh, when the order was made. And, uh, the picture on the right there is, again, from today, and again, all of the same issues are, are present. I mainly took photographs of the sanitation or health issues today, as well as the inoperable vehicles. Um, all of the trailers, of course, uh, are still on the property and it does not appear that there have been any positive changes to the trailers. The majority of them do have what it appears to be more broken windows than they did in the past, but uh, this is trailer number two that we had spoken about last time and I believe Mr. Dearbone had asked, um, about the accumulation of garbage behind that trailer. It appears that that has also been removed now that there's access to the, the dumpster. So, I attempted to get a picture here of that, that garbage being removed from that property. The inoperable vehicles are still on the property. Uh, it appears that there has been some effort made to, I, I guess, move them or make them operable as far as putting wheels or tires on them. Uh, this one, of course, not being a good example of that, since there, there is no tire on this one still. Uh, this one, there was no, I believe, front tire on, I'm sorry, it's the right rear tire or the, uh, driver's side rear tire that was missing before. Uh, it appears that a tire was placed on this vehicle on the driver's side rear. However, it only, uh, has two lug nuts and it's not actually seated on there, so I don't, I don't know if that would make it operable or not. Uh, that being said, there's still no tire on the passenger front. And the green vehicle, uh, there was originally no tire on the driver's side front, there is a tire now. However, that tire is flat and there is still no tire on the passenger side of the vehicle. Uh, all, all of those vehicles also have no registration and are unlicensed. The mattress that was outside, I'm sorry, the two mattresses that were outside of lot ten appear to have been moved from that location, however, at least one of those two is back by the dumpster. Here in front of the workshop, uh, there was an accumulation of cans and bottles and, um, different items of rubbish, trash and garbage. Those appear to have been removed from the property altogether. Uh, I don't know if they were in the last load of trash or in the dumpster now, but those are no longer there. There was also a boat that was parked here next to the workshop and that, that has been removed, although there was no code violation for that initially. Uh, the remainder of the sanitation issues, the junk issues and so forth still remain. In addition, I, because it was raining today when I took the pictures, uh, several of these pools of water and I'm not quite sure if that's from the vehicles being there for a long period of time or where it came from, but uh, it appears that they're full of either oil or gasoline, uh, that was standing in several pools on the, on the property. Uh, obviously, that wasn't present at the last board meeting, but it was something that I felt needed to be addressed as well. And Tim, if you can go to the ones behind the shed. There, but, there's also, uh, it appears that Mr. Minton, since the last meeting, did mow all of the property. Uh, all of the grass was cut between all of the trailers, as well as the area back here. I'm not sure if it's because of the change in seasons that we're now able to see some of the items back here behind the workshop, but, or, or if this is a new accumulation, although it certainly doesn't appear so, but, um, a very large pile of, of wood, more mattresses, more furniture, uh, tires and, and such are behind the workshop that previously we were not able to, to see as well.
Minton?
Yes. Well, I, I have eliminated some of the stuff I've done as, uh, as much as I could. Uh, the dumpsters, uh, you know, had to have them, uh, come and empty those. Uh, we removed the mattresses and box springs that was at number ten. Uh, that door that's standing up now by the building, I mean, it was laying flat on the ground, it was on top of the other door. Uh, I have brought no extra trash or, or lumber or anything since our last meeting. Uh, I was under impression that I was supposed to have a plan for the park and I have talked to, uh, Tommy Hunt, uh, Hunt Realtors. Matter of fact, I think Brad met him out there this morning. We talked, I don't know, it's been a week or so, uh, maybe a couple of weeks. Anyway, he has, uh, told him I wanted to put the property up for sale. He said he had somebody that would come in there on the mobile homes and, uh, either move them or get permission from the code enforcement to, to tear them down and, and, uh, scrap them out there on the premises. As of today, the people that he had to come down, uh, are, that supposed to, uh, give an estimate on the, uh, on the, uh, getting rid of the mobile homes. We haven't signed a contract yet or anything, but I mean, you know, I'm, I'm willing to do what he's, he's doing. Talking, he's talking about this, uh, what he thinks is oil and stuff. That is all leaves, it's all leaf, uh, it's where I tuck and chopped all these leaves up, I, I took off, I've taken off about, uh, I would guess somewhere between twenty-five to thirty trash cans of leaves that I've mulched up. This is what was left and when the rain hit it, it's, it's, uh, it's not oil, it's not oil and it's not gasoline, it's, it's the, uh, residue from the leaves. But anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm in contact with, uh, Mr. Hunt. All we have to decide is whether we're going to sell it at an auction or if he wants to sell it on, you know, put it for, for sale sign on it and try to sell it to them. But we're, we're, we're in the process of, of doing that and like I said, Brad met, met them today and, uh, I think he kind of told him what we were doing and-
What kind of timetable are you looking at, Mr. Minton?
Uh, I'm gonna leave that up to Mr. Hunt, I mean, you know, uh, uh, he's gonna have to advertise it and, uh, I don't know how long, you know, I don't know if December and January is a, a bad time to sell property. Uh, but the way he talked, he was gonna get on, uh, on the computers of mass, mass media, he had several different ways, you know, he could advertise it and, and, get people in there to, to take a look at it. He seemed to think it would be a prime location for some industry, I mean, it's, uh, I don't know, he, he, like I said, he explained it to me and, uh-
How many acres is it?
You know, I was gonna ask him that today, cause he had the plot out there. It's not only the Mobile Home Park, on the property next door to it too, it's probably-
Is it number five, six acres, six acres?
I have a plot.
About six acres, I think. That's Russellville Road there, it goes back like that.
And these are the lots?
That's, that's the way it was, that's the way the lots were at the beginning.
Pardon?
That's Russellville Road and at one point in time, I presume the lots all faced, faced Russellville Road. And, uh, now it's, it's different now, Zach. And you, plus you got houses there too.
Yeah, there's four houses on-
And see, that's another issue that would be addressed by Mr. Hunt, that would have to be probably auctioned and, uh, and or demolished, uh, to, for him to make that property, uh, a commercial piece of property type thing.
Today's the first day that, uh, he's got back, we, we met initially and we talked about, uh, what I wanted to do, I told him I, I need to, uh, eliminate the mobile homes, uh, and the day's the first day that he's gotten back to me and he had a big folder and had it all out, uh, and he's, uh, told me that he had the people to come and, and, and move all this, all this stuff, he's gonna take care of it. Of course, he told me that when we initially started talking, that he had somebody that he could get and, and eliminate all that, all the, all those problems. So, I've just kind of been in, that's here, I've been talking to you, I haven't talked to anybody else, got the whole thing. All we have to do is kind of, where he talked is come up with a price. I thought, uh, he said it could be, you know, very, quite a bit one way or the other.
So, he's expecting to sign a contract with you then?
Yes, yes. Yes. Uh, gonna, gonna do whatever means it takes to, to eliminate the, the mobile homes and, uh, you know, all the, all the junk, but like I said, when, when, when first initially met, that's, he told me he would have somebody that could get, get, take care of everything.
You know, taking care of everything costs.
Yes, but, uh, you know, uh, that's the thing that he doesn't know exactly what it's gonna cost right now, because he said the guy was supposed to come down, he was a very busy guy, he had, he dealt with him on many properties, the way he talked and that, uh, this guy would come in and take care of all that and-
When was the first time you talked to Mr. Hunt regarding this?
When was it?
When was the first time you talked to Mr. Hunt?
Uh, I talked to him over the phone, probably just a few days after we, our last meeting. And then I met with him out there at the, at the Mobile Home Park. First of last week or the end of the week before that, I, I can't remember all the dates.
Today was the second time you've met him first to first, first, face to face?
Face to face.
First to first?
But he, he took all the information I gave him, uh, to begin with and, like I said, they had pictures. Matter of fact, I, I had pictures of the park, I had pictures of, I told you the other day, I wanted to get out of the rental business altogether and they went around and took pictures of, of all the houses that I had and, and, uh,
Mr. Chairman, for what it's worth, I'll share this with you, I've, uh, I've worked with Mr. Hunt before and if he's been in contact with Mr. Minton, uh, Mr. Minton is making the right direction at this point in time. I just wish something had been firmed up, but at least he's made the right direction, moving the right way at this point in time.
Like I said, Brad was there today and, and, and met him, him and his, uh, associate today too. And in matter of fact, they exchanged, uh, business cards and stuff.
Brad, I'm sorry, who did you meet with?
It was, uh, Tommy Hunt and a Jeff Harned, uh, it says that he's an associate or, uh, I guess apprentice auctioneer as well.
What's the last guy, what's the last guy's name?
Uh, Jeff Harned, H A R N E D. But they're both, uh, well, actually, I'm sorry, it says Jeff Harned is a Realtor with, uh, Wykurt Realtors. Um, but it also says the Hunt Group, so I'm guessing that's, um, Hunt Auctions as well.
Well, did you get the same impression as Mr. Minton, that he's interested in?
I, I certainly was only there for a couple of minutes, so I'm not quite sure all of what they discussed, cause I, I kind of, uh, came upon them as I was going to take photographs of the, the Mobile Home Park. Uh, I will concur though, that, uh, Mr. Hunt had a binder there that had, appeared to have pictures of all of the different mobile homes. Uh, had the address and, um, had their logo on it and it appeared that they were going over that, that book as I arrived, so uh, they, they were, Mr. Hunt was certainly, uh, I guess, involved in some sort of transaction there and it appeared that he was interested in, in helping Mr. Minton, certainly.
He told me, he, I told him I had a board meeting tonight with you folks and he said, you know, y'all can call and confirm anything. You know, we're, we're just in the process, like you said, you made a present your plan, plan tonight and that's, that's, that's what I've done. I mean, I went in, I've cut the grass and I've got up a lot of the trash, I've filled the dumpster a couple of times and, and, uh, I've been doing, doing what I could, when I could.
You have one piece of property that's currently rented, right? You have one occupant?
Yeah, I've got, I've got one, one, uh, mobile home that's rented right now and of course, I've got the houses, a couple of the houses are rented.
So, did you have that discussion with Mr. Hunt as well?
About what, sir?
About having some, uh, people on property that are paying you rent now?
Yes.
Yeah, he understands that as part of the deal?
Yeah. It's just, uh, you know, he said he didn't know what the property would bring, I mean, you know, it could go, you know, one way or the other, he said, you know, my, the way he was talking to me when we first initially met, uh, about the houses, he was talking about how the houses, the market on the houses was doing real well, that he, he had just sold one on Auburn and I've got a house on Auburn, uh, he thought he'd get about seventy-five, eighty thousand and probably like a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so, he thought, he, he thinks now's the time to sell, uh, because, uh, investors are, you know, it's, it's just a, a good thing they can make more money on, uh-
They're really good about telling you what you want to hear.
Ha, yeah, well, that's true, yeah, that's true.
Good time. Do your leases allow you to, um, terminate their, their occupancy on like thirty days' notice?
I'd have to check that and see, sir, you know, of course, if we sold it, uh, if we auctioned it off, the, the new buyer might want to, uh, own the houses.
Change at that point?
You know, but I don't, I don't know about the, uh, but anyway, we're, we're-
Well, I, I think I'd like to see, um, I asked you about a, a, a signed agreement, a signed agreement here. And maybe by, uh, our January meeting and with Mr. Hunt, that they're making, um, effort to either auction or sell the property. Otherwise, um, as, uh, was said, that people will tell you that, yeah, it's a good market and we'll just go on and on, so.
Like I said, the, the thing he told me at, uh, when I initially, that he had people that could, uh, take care of the mobile homes, take care of the other stuff and, uh, all we'd have to do is get a price on it, get the, these people down here. They've worked for him on several occasions, so.
This, this didn't come about in the last two weeks or so, this has been building up for some time and, and the condition, uh, I don't know-
I don't know if you remember from last week, like I said, I, I, I'm in poor health right now and, and, and I've got a mother and a son, it's, it's, I'm having problems with, I'm really concerned about my son. He's got encephalitis and, and, uh-
I'm sorry, you're speaking to the mic, we can't-
Okay, I'm sorry, he's got encephalitis and, uh, uh,
Wow.
He's got a problem, prob- he's thirty-six years old, he's got a problem, you know, he's losing his sight, uh, he can't see sometimes and, and, uh, like yesterday, he fell, he's having problems walking and, and, uh, uh, thankfully, uh, my mother, I have to take her to the doctor tomorrow and, and hopefully she'll be able to come back home with us tomorrow. She's been gone now for, oh, about three months, she's been in the hospital and in, uh, Sky and now she's in Magnolia Village, but I think, uh, if she gets, uh, we took her for x-rays last week, uh, on her back, cause she fell and, and cracked her vertebrae and, uh, took her for x-rays, we got, I've got an appointment with the doctors at three-thirty tomorrow and so hopefully everything, uh, uh, will be good there, but I, I've got a lot, I've got, I've had a lot going on for her.
We don't want to make your life harder, but we have a situation that we're trying to address.
And I'm, I'm, I'm trying to correct this situation and if, if, as far as I'm concerned, if Mr. Hunt can, you know, uh, he said we could put a reserve on the property, uh, it, it would be a, a, a small reserve, but, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try my best to, uh, get rid of this, this stress.
What, what's a small reserve mean, what does?
Well, he, he, he said, uh, he, he would take a reserve of like three hundred thousand on, on the property there. He said he thought it could go anywhere from three hundred thousand to- He said he thought it could go anywhere from 300,000 to 500,000. He didn't know.
But what that reserve means, Jack, is that Mr. Minton would not take less than $300,000.
Yeah.
That's what that means. You've got an absolute auction and a reserve auction. Absolute auction means they sell it, period. Reserve auction means he's got some control, some say so in it. He'll have to pay upfront fees, upfront fees of advertising. Whether it sells or not, he's going to have to pay upfront fees in an auction. And other agreements that will be signed between you and Mr. Hunt?
Yes, yes. But he said he thought it would go anywhere from 300 to 500,000. You know, that's, he said, you know, he couldn't guarantee that, but he thought that's what the property would be worth.
Again, we're talking about what it could be worth. But it's got to be cleaned up.
Cleaned up, yes, yes, yes.
And that's going to be costly.
Yeah.
And you've got the houses there and you're going to have peoples, families being disrupted. But all that's got to be done for you to get the park. I don't see the houses selling to any individual person.
No.
And then someone, some investor coming in and buying that broken up piece of property, which will be left for something commercial. So that's my thinking. I see the whole property going for 300 or 400,000 dollars as a piece of commercial property. House is gone, trailer is gone. That's what I look at.
Well, there's two tracks of property there. And he, you know, he said, informed me that they would try to sell like the park and that track of property, then they would sell the other track of property and then they would combine them. So if somebody come in and wanted to buy two pieces. Like I said, he told me he would be glad to let you folks talk to him.
Well, Thomas, are you suggesting that we table this until the first of the year or first meeting in January?
No, not quite. What I would suggest is that we'd like to see an agreement with Mr. Hunt or whoever you choose by the first of the year. And if that's not handled, then this $150 a day fine will stand.
You would need to bring that to code enforcement by January 1st or?
That's correct.
Okay.
Present it to you, assign, notarize, or whatever you do. So we know that we do have a plan.
Plan, yeah. That's fine. That's fine. That's.
I'll make that motion.
Is it by January the 1st you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
That gives you a month and a half.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
What's the motion? And what about the fines that we've got here already?
Okay, let me repeat it. What it said is that he will enter into an agreement with Mr. Hunt or whoever to sell or auction the property at their discretion. And that if that is not done by January the 1st, 2016, then the fine of 150 that was voted on the last meeting will still be in effect. So it'll be really two months' worth of $150 fines. And I think Mr. Minton said that was acceptable. Is that correct?
Yeah, you're saying if I've got the contract with him to sell it, hopefully maybe we might even have it sold.
You may not sell it by then or auction it.
As long as we've got the agreement to.
But we have something, a direction and something on paper.
Let me ask you another question now. If he brings these people in, can they tear the mobile homes and stuff on the premises? Can they tear it down and scrap it out and haul it away on the premises?
I have no idea.
With the proper permits, they should be able to do that.
The house, you'd probably get the permit to tear it down.
Correct.
I don't think you have to have one for the mobile home. Unless it's.
Well, the mobile homes is what we're going to get rid of first. I mean, the houses, we're going to, like I said, try to sell those and people can do with them what they want.
They would have to be permits, I'm sure.
You need to check on that. I mean, we've spoken on the mobile homes. You may have to get permits for both. I know you do for the house.
I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I talked to one of our building inspectors, Teddy Webb, and he had said that he tried to make it clear that there would be some permits and that would have to be obtained for him to dismantle those mobile.
Well, that's typical for that type of destruction. I mean, you've got gas lines running all over the place. It's going to have to be removed.
For demolition.
Correct, yes, sir.
All that's going to be considered.
If they just wanted to move the mobile homes and if they wanted to do something as far as moving them, they wouldn't have to do any of that.
I don't think you're going to have to worry about that. I think Mr. Hunt, it's going to have to be your representative to take care of that, protect you and according to the law, and he will.
All right.
Or whoever you use.
Yeah, he's a good man.
I have a question before we do this thing. Going back to our last meeting, I read from today's notes, citation and fees, $156.75, parentheses upheld at 10:27:15 meeting, plus $3,150 in per-day fines to date. Fees remain unpaid as of November 13th, 2015. Are we just forgetting all that?
No, those are still owed. The $156.75 is still, it still needs to be paid on this property. The $150 per day fine that was going to be extended until?
The 31, $3,150, what's that?
That is the total to date of what the $150 per day fine would have been.
Some of that might be forgiven depending on what the board wishes at that time.
It was just giving you a total, so you'd know how much it would be today.
I wanted to make sure we don't overlook something in our motion.
But the citation fees that have been upheld, those are still owed.
They just rolled into, from today on, at 150. We would add 150 from today on if the contract is not entered into.
I was under the impression I was supposed to bring you a plan in and that's the reason I've got in touch with Mr. Hunt and done all that, to eliminate the $150 fee that I did owe the 156. But I didn't think there was anything on the.
In fact, the way I understand your motion, Mr. Chairman, is the 156 is already done. That's over with. He owes that.
Correct.
As it relates to the $150 a day fine, which today equals $3,150, that may or may not have to be paid depending on what he does as of January 1st. That's the way your motion is at this point.
That is correct. And what I've asked for is a signed agreement.
By January?
By January 1st. And if that is not done, then you will be subject to 150 going back to the last meeting. So you've got 60 days worth of 150.
Total around $9,000. It could total around $9,000 of day-to-day fees. So it's incumbent that you come into this meeting in January with a good plan.
Yes, sir.
And maybe bring the agent.
That's right. You have, you have three months, actually.
I've got one more question while we're doing things, maybe irregular. Who else owns that property other than you? Are there any other owners? You're the only one?
Yeah, fee simple title to that.
My wife and I, yeah.
Okay. How about liens and things of that nature?
As far as I know, there's none.
Okay. That's all I have.
You have a motion and second on the floor, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Simpson?
Yes.
Wilder?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Still making progress, aren't we?
Yeah. See if we can get it done.
So you still have an unpaid of 156.75 you'll have to take care of?
Yeah, I just.
Okay.
All righty.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the consent agenda is at the back of your package. It totals $2,067.50. Do I have a motion to accept that as presented?
I'll move.
Second.
Sorry, Wilder? Simpson? Simpson?
Yes.
Wilder? Thomas?
Yes.
Be new for their business? Oh, well, well, regular meeting.
Yeah, regular meeting. I would request a motion to go in closed session to discover current and pending litigation.
All right, I'll make the motion, go into executive session here.
Thomas, Wilder, Simpson?
Yes.
Wilder?
Yes.
Thomas?